I'm going to call the meeting to order, declare a quorum. I don't see any public comments and I'm going to delay approval of minutes until Kim can get here because Sylvia sent in a couple of late changes that I want to make sure get registered. So why don't we go right to David Cox, the financial consultant?
Yeah, so I'm pleased to announce David Cox, he's going to walk you through the financial model, which we all saw one minute, one meeting months ago with a flash. And then the Subcommittee on Finance, which is Sylvia and Jennifer have looked at it a couple of times. But I thought it would be helpful to have David come and walk you through a little bit of it and some of the things that we're looking at. So anyway, David Cox.
Thank you. It's great to be here. Thank you for the invitation. It's nice to meet you all. My name's David Cox. I am CFO, English Chartered Accountant, as you might be able to gather. Been here in the States for about 22 years and I have spent a lot of my career in the media and literary area. I was with The Economist magazine for many years as their CFO. So it's been a, it's been a great honor and privilege to actually work with David and Jennifer and the team here to be able to help them pull the model together for the district. And I liken this very much to a startup because really we've been working with scanned information. It's got better as the weeks have run on and we found out more about what city is planning and what the city is allowing. So the model has been very iterative in terms of its development. But I thought I would sort of give you a heads up and please stop me and ask questions if you, if you want to. I think what I would say is that we've been prudent here and I think it's true with the changes that have gone on and the new district, it's been, it's been prudent and we've been particularly prudent on revenues. You can see here from the top line, total revenue, it only grows about 15% over the period from 24 through to 30.
Could you make it a little bigger?
Yeah, it can make it a little bit bigger, yeah. Okay. You see that? That's better, is it? Yeah. So it grows about 15% and it's based on 3.5% of the total asset value in terms of taxes and things. So rising from 21 million in '24 up to about just shy of 25 million. So a steady growth, it may go faster and again, that's just an assumption we've made at this stage. In terms of the costs, the total operating expenses and salaries, again, they are growing. And I think it's fair to say here that we have got work to do on sort of maintenance, which is wrapped up in here, and also on people. I think, you know, as you will all know, getting good people at reasonable salaries is key. And I think there's some leveling up as well to be done. Headcount does rise. We're going from 81 currently in the, in the old structure to 127. And again, this is an assumption, but that's what we're, that's what we're showing at the moment. And that is around about 60%, 63% of revenues by the time we get to 2030. And that's sort of fairly consistent with, with other libraries. It's, it's in the ballpark. So I think, you know, that's, that's, the salary is a lot of work to be done there. And I think we're going to be talking about benefits and things a little bit later. What I would say also is around capital investment. So something David was very, very focused on when we first started talking about building the model was around capital. And how can we, how can we improve the maintenance? How can we, how can we do the renovations? A lot of, a lot of capital buildings need work done on them and things like that. And again, we've been very focused on that. I would say the, the big thing, one of the sort of saving graces is the, is the fact that we are, from the buildings we've inherited, not going to have to pay a large rent, which is good. We, I think we've acquired about 115,000 square feet of building space, but at the notional $1 per annum. That's a big cost saving to us. But that said, there is quite a lot of investment going in. You can see this line here about investing in assets and this is cash. And I think that gives us sort of best impression of what we're doing in terms of investment. We are going to be buying two buildings or getting long-term leases on two buildings. One in the end of 2024, the Gun Barrel. This is, at the moment, we have assumed 10,000 square feet at about $250 a square foot on a 30-year lease. So that's an investment of two and a half million. And throughout this cycle, we're also going to be investing round about, in terms of capital improvement, around about 400,000 in some years, a little bit more in terms of developing the current infrastructure and renovating the current infrastructure. And again, in 2029, we buy another building, we get a long-term lease on another building. And that's where the investing in assets in 2029 jumps up. But as I say, a lot of focus going on, on capital investment, which I think is needed. I, you know, David said to me, you know, should we, should we buy these buildings? Should we raise capital? Should we, you know, should we borrow for them? And I think at the moment, I think that is a decision that we can probably park for a time being. I would say that, you know, with, with commercial mortgage rates up at six, nearly seven percent, you know, that's, that's an expensive proposition to borrow a couple of million dollars. I mean, maybe we don't finance it all, but hoping that mortgage rates may drop a little bit next year. And I think in the middle of next year, when we start thinking about Gun Barrel, I think it's worth re-investigating that. But at the moment, I would, I've built into the model that they're funded from our current cash flow. And we have the cash flow to be able to do that. And again, you know, if you're borrowing at 6.8% and you can, you can only get 5% or 4% on savings, you know, you have to, you use a question mark there. But again, being prudent. I think the other thing I would highlight and say is, you know, quite a big outflow next year in terms of financing. Clearly, we have to pay the city back for the 13 and a half million in costs that they have incurred on our BBR this year. And we want to do that quite quickly. So we're going to pay back 10 million in January and we're going to pay three and a half million back in April. And that will be done. I think that is, that's why if you look at this, the sort of the year-end cash flow for next year is 417. And we may do a little bit better than that. Again, I'm saying we're being prudent here. But in, in future years, when we don't have that big payback, we don't have that big cash outflow and we manage our costs well, I think we can start to see that our closing cash balances grows. And again, I think that is prudent and I think it will also help us as we invest in new infrastructure. We will have the money available to be able to do that. That said, we're not, you know, we're not sort of letting the money sit there idly. We will be sweeping the money, the funds, any funds into some of the Chase money market accounts. You know, obviously low risk or we're not, we're not, we're not risking the money. But we want to maximize the amount of interest that that, any surplus funds can, can earn. And I think, again, I'm being prudent, we've got a year, you know, we've got the first year. We want to see how things work out. And then I think, you know, sort of middle of next year, when things are a little bit more certain and we paid the city back and everything, then we can start to think about an investment strategy on any surplus cash or, or funds that we might have. So in a nutshell, I mean, that's, that's, that's it. I mean, I think it's, it's a fairly, it's a complex model, but I've tried to simplify it as much as possible. You know, there's a chart here, which I think just sort of shows you the movement in cash. Because I think that's what's important is understanding what's happening with cash. You know, we have a big cash influx now, but that goes because we have to pay the city back. And then we are, you know, relying on 2024 tax revenues or receipts. And we have the programs that we have to fund and that rolls through the next few years. Just to give you a little bit of a flavor of, of the programs over the course of the next few years, you can see that we are spending considerably more on facilities and maintenance. I mean, if you look here, in 2023, we spent just over a million dollars on facilities and maintenance. Next year and beyond, we are spending close to 3 million, 2.8 million. And that, you know, that grows up to 3 million by the end of this cycle. So I'm going to leave it there.
With maintenance or backlog maintenance that will be?
Backlog maintenance that is fun into it as well. So you two, you were pretty good with the report from the city, which
Right, right.
On average, about one, two million dollars.
Right.
Contract labor maintenance that staff did and the staffing costs. That number goes from, you know, on average around 1.2 to 1.5 to about 2.8. So that factors in, you know, pretty extraordinary leap in putting money into fixing up.
Yeah, doing some, yeah, yeah, I get it.
We have, no, and we have the, we have the cover, which details $9 million of work to be done over the next, whatever decade. I'm not sure we'll get through all of that because it didn't prioritize, it did prioritize the list, but not with regard to what our strategies might be, just this is what the buildings might need. And also I think we probably, we'll have to see, right? That'll be a discussion we have around Carnegie. It's a, it's on that historical register. The cost for renovation there will probably be, if we can get somebody to do them, much higher than we would pay ordinarily for fixing a window. The cost for fixing a window at Carnegie might be three times.
Okay.
Oh, I, you know, there's just a sort of breakdown of programs in 23. And you can see, you know, in terms of percentages of how much we're spending in each of the areas and that. You know, that quite big jump year over year compared to 23. It is 14% of the, of the budget, program budget goes on facilities and maintenance, public services and acquisitions, obviously collection acquisitions is a big area too.
So this is the green.
Yes, facilities is the green area. So I mean, I, that's all, I mean, that's all I, I sort of had to say. Happy to take questions, happy if any of you want to go through this separately and take you through more detail. There's, there's, there's multiple schedules attached to this file, which detail everything out in, in detail. But I thought I'd focus at a, at a high level and give you an overview.
First question, since you guys have discussed it various times and that's fine, what kind of financial strategy do you have?
And so David, you know, I was already asking this question today, but David, if you were to, if we were to say what amount of money do you have available, like presently, that would be available for the next five or six months for some kind of strategy? What approximately do you estimate?
In terms of investments, in terms of investing money, yeah. Half a million, something like that, I would think. I mean, again, I think 24 is quite low, you know, we've got an expensive year in 24. And, you know, after that, yeah, I would say half a million probably, but it may be more as the, as the time runs.
And you mentioned the JP Morgan Chase money markets. Do you want to just lay out for the board the terms of that? I understand it's six months and it's a reasonable interest rate if we're parking chunks of money for a period of time?
Yes, 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 that's the, I, I, I don't know the specifics of that particular account, but yes, that's typically how it works and it's a, it's a, you know, it's a safe investment. It's not so they're, they're doing, you know, things with it. But it's rather like if you, if a CD or something like that, where you get a set, a set load of interest.
Yes.
Yeah.
A month ago was right around 4%, so we could get 4%, which, you know, you can get 5% from your Apple Pay account, but that seems to be, I thought they're doing with the money, so for a government account. Still, it's quite good.
What we would have been getting 10 years ago, like one, maybe lucky if you got 1%. So yeah, it's one of the benefits I'm hiding.
I want to move on to a different question, but.
Yeah, just one thing before you do that. So, so we should plan on, after we adopt the budget, agreeing on a strategy for parking these small amounts of money? We have planned on having our conversation about our long-term financial investment strategy after the first of the year. But I think we're going to have some money to park before that again, as David said, not a huge amount. But let's plan on having that conversation as part of immediately after the budget discussion. Make sure everybody's comfortable with putting this money into something that gives us some return on investment while it's, while it's not necessarily being used.
I would urge us to have a financial policy, basically, some kind of investment policy and structure in place. And I just wonder if other library districts have done that or if there's models there that we could consider and adopt. But I think that's a piece of it.
Yeah, there are and the finance, so it's both governance and finance and budget that have piece of that originally. It said we were going to try and do that in November. They asked for us to wait until after the first of the year because the budget finance people have so much on their plates. So that's what I'm saying, you're planning on having that conversation and developing that policy. We need some models after the first of the year, but I think there'll be some money. You know, we'd lose maybe three or four months' worth of interest if we don't do something with this first chunk of 2023. And we're talking about, I think that's our smart.
Yeah, I mean, you know, four months is whatever, it's only going to be five grand on a half million.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's not nothing, but.
Yeah. Anyway, we didn't have that conversation.
Yeah, it's true.
So who's the "they" that you were referencing?
I'm sure it's in finance committee, Sylvia and Jen. Yeah, they felt their hands were full until after that.
I think that's an important part though of the process. So I would hope we can link those more closely together.
We, if we could ask what other boards have in place, that might be like, I don't know, Pooter, Pooter River, what, is it Pooter Valley or Pooter River?
And we got sent those or did I hallucinate that?
When we passed our financial policy, I shared those with you. So you do have a couple of guidelines.
Sorry.
You can look at them again.
Yeah, okay, I mean.
So I think one of the questions we're going to be, oh, you were going to hear a question.
No, I mean, it's okay. My just question was about adding so many staff. And that's a little concerning just because then our carrying costs each year, it, you know, if it's in the budget, it's great. It's just like, we probably have, we should see what HH does because a lot of people are getting behind that. But I think that like, you know, I'm a little concerned because we just, you know, go cautiously, I guess, there on that.
So like currently, the amount that the auditor told us as the estimated value was 30% increase in 2024 from 2020.
Yeah.
The city is currently using 25% if HH passes.
Okay.
We have not jumped that far yet, so we're sticking with 15, which initially I think we had shown 12 in this model. And we're already on around 15%. So pretty conservative, but that's kind of where I'm comfortable right now. I think if we start to see that, if HH fails and or, then I think we'll have to reevaluate.
Right.
And it gives us some room. So the budget that we're putting together for 24 week, which I'll preview next week, you know, is accounting for expenditures related to that increase in staffing. That, that has been a major issue for the library for years is simply capacity.
Right.
And so as we talked a couple of times, right, and the finance committees really talked about, everything we do, 60% of the cost of it is staff. And so if we plan on opening Carnegie, opening elbow, opening Gun Barrel, adding the full array of administrative staff for HR, for communications, for finance, for facilities, it is a major uptick in the number of staff that we are adding to the building. There, there's also discussion, like, are there ways in which we can expand upon services, given what we anticipate the budget will be? And I think there is room there. So you'll, you'll see that that is, I mean, again, it won't be 60, more than that roughly 60% of the overall budget. But as we expend money, even with increased spending for facilities costs, that comes with adding a full facility staff, right? There's like, I think, five or six people in the, in the budget for 2024, which we do not currently have.
Right.
You know, can we fill those jobs? That's kind of an interesting question, right? It's a lot of jobs to fill and that is of concern. And I think we have some of them slated for January, some of them slated for March, April, some of them slated for third quarter. And so they will all come on. We're budgeting, what you'll see in the budget, both probably not next week, but in, on the 10th, is, you know, we're budgeting for a full year of all of them. So there will be savings because we will not be able to hire all these people for January 1.
Right. And then I guess when you add Gun Barrel, you'll have to add additional staff as well.
Yeah, we're factoring that into projections on this, on this.
Okay.
And that doesn't happen until 25.
Right.
There are several things in the budget that don't happen till 2025. Some of them we moved up to 2024, given what we know about the budget and the, and the assessment year that we've had, even, even if proposition HH passes.
Right.
Third quarter of 2024, the theater is a physical capital. We had not planned on expanding the theater just until 2025, but now we're planning on.
Other questions?
What was the borrowing scenario for like buying a building in Gun Barrel?
So I, I have not factored in, I mean, discussion David and I had about whether we should borrow, whether we should borrow funds to buy a building. And typically, you would borrow if you didn't have the, if you didn't have the cash flow. So you, you had better use for your spare cash somewhere else. Or your, you know, your borrowing costs were low. Or if you're a corporation, you'd get a tax relief on interest that you used to borrow. It doesn't apply in this case. And I think with, I looked this morning at 30-year commercial mortgage rates, you know, hovering 6.5 to 7% fixed, which is very high at the moment. Now, the library may get a better rate, but still, it strikes me that, you know, settling yourself up with debt at this stage is not the best idea. But again, interest rates may drop next year and I think that conversation can be had again in the middle of next year as we, as we look for a building for the end of next year.
Whether to rent or?
Yeah, to rent, yeah.
And the other thing is, could I get this file? Because even if I was sitting where she's sitting, I couldn't. I said, it's just not that good.
Yeah, we worked on it today, so you'll give me an update. Yes, it's a Gun Barrel decision as well as the, you know, Meadows decision in 2029. For once, it will have to make its time come. All of those options we will say are on the table right now. So Nashville could mean that we buy a building outright, right? Maybe in both instances. We could also put money down and finance it for 30 years. We can put money down and finance a portion of it for 10 years or 15. We could also rent a space right now, for today, we have the money. Commercial market is flat and is pretty flat. The prices of buildings to buy are not coming up. They may, in which case then it becomes prohibitive. Or, you know, we may strike at the right time and making a rental agreement doesn't make sense. We just purchase. We'll have to see. We will include in the budget amount of money around capital expenditures in 2024 that would enable us to do one of those three things, right? All, all three of them. We will have the, we'll have the capital budget to make that decision when the time arrives.
Well, yeah, so I think it feels like the facilities piece is aggressively funded, I would say. And so, you know, once we get the projects listed and cost estimates, we could hopefully save money there. We'll see. I mean, like, but it feels like in that area, we've built in some cushion. I, I, I don't know, it's, it's a lot, 3 million.
It is a lot of, you know, it's difficult to know because, you know, are there enough workers?
Right.
Workers on a historical building, there are not that many firms.
Yeah, well.
And so that, you know, so say if we decided we were going to strike on Carnegie in 2024, we may be able to find a contract by the end of the year. We may not, right? So then what, where do we spend the money? And it could be, you know, obviously in the budget, we'll see, our, our focus will be on the critical issues in regard to this building and with regard to Carnegie. Those are two buildings that I don't see. And I'll put my justification before you next week about why we need to take care of these buildings. It doesn't matter to me. I'm like, I, I feel like fiduciary is a sense of responsibility. And I've written an eloquent, you know, five-page memo for you to read next week about why you should terribly much care about whether you own them or not. Our responsibility is the same. And so, and you can make a decision.
On both of those, I think that there'll probably need to be some community outreach, I would guess. And so I don't know if we budgeted for that and how we, like, it probably won't be a ton of money, but I'm just saying like, we probably should have someone, you know, we might need some money to allocate to.
Absolutely.
As a community.
Yeah, and so the budget reflects that as well. Master plan calls for roughly 3% of our budget is spent on communications and engagement. You know, we have built out funding in the model, both for a strategic plan around communications, marketing. Carnegie, I think will be, you know, top of mind for people.
Right.
The main library, the things that are on list are, you know, it's like, it's like outlets, boilers, roofs. I don't know.
No.
I don't know how its community would come out for that engagement. They may, they may agree with us that they don't want the roof to leak, but I'm not sure how far we can go, like.
I meant like what people's vision, not vision, but realistic vision of Carnegie and then location of the Gun Barrel branch.
Yes.
Those two things, I think.
And for Carnegie, I mean, we have such a strong set of historic and genealogical communities that have deep and longstanding investment.
Oh, yeah.
Even in financial investments. So working with those people in particular will be helpful. And they may be helpful in finding us grant money. They have been in the past. So that'll be a particular focus. There'll be lots of interest and lots of hope, I think, there.
There are structural needs at Carnegie, you should remember from the plan that Coming did for us that are simply like, you have to fix the bricks. You have to replace the roof, needs repairs.
Yeah.
So those, as a long-term, a longer-term vision of what Carnegie might become, that's obviously a major engagement.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
And we would not want to begin it until we've actually hired the manager of Carnegie.
Yeah.
So unbeknownst to most of you, not all of you, but Jennifer has been the manager of Carnegie since the pandemic landed and we had to let go of staff. Jennifer manages the staff day-to-day. So we are desperately anxious to get a, an actual archivist there to manage the crew and add archivists to the building, potentially open it some hours to the public. It has not been open since March of 2020. So getting some of those things.
Won't open all that much then.
Yeah, so, you know, there, there is, you know, the potential for us to expand those services pretty significantly. But it's going to require, again, staffing. So there are staff associated with that, that project as well.
And one more question on Carnegie then. We assume have budgeted something for archival space. That's been the other issue there is trying to find something that can maintain the collection in a better state.
Yeah, so that's a two-part, two-prong question. Again, I think we need advice from a, a manager of the archive. I, you know, 10 years ago, I asked Wendy to investigate off-site storage because I think a lot of the stuff there, just, we can't get the building to, it's improved and Nicole did such.
I wasn't asking a solution, I was just asking if we have budgeted money for that since we know that will be an expense.
It's potential.
I'm seeing a no.
Yeah, it's, it's.
Okay, good. Other questions? I would just say that the, the model has been extremely helpful. I mean, we've had David running. I would just say that the the model has been extremely helpful. I mean, we've had David running scenarios through it, um, so we could understand cash flow, we could understand the payback scenario from the city. Um, and that's great. And I think once we do know where we land with HH, it will be fairly easy to put assumptions in here and things through. So I appreciate the sensitivity that's built into this, and the assumptions seem very reasonable to me. I think we should be prepared to answer to the public questions about what assumptions we are making.
Hmm.
That's been, there's a lot of ideas about what assumptions we are making or should be making. And so I don't know when we we do the budget, if we're, if we can have a little set of talking points around, this is how this financial is model is built, this is what it's built around. For the geeks that want to go into that, the geeks and the critics.
And the library lovers.
And the library lovers. Well, I think the library lovers don't tend to want to go down into the depths.
That's right, it.
Yeah, they they'll be looking at the programs piece. Okay, well, is there anything else on this?
What was your name again? Is it in here?
David Cox.
Oh, David Cox.
Thank you.
Two Davids.
Again, thank you so much for doing this.
My pleasure.
Out here and, uh, the walk us through it and share that with us. Sylvia, do you have any questions? I know you've been looking at this from the Budget and Finance Committee standpoint, so.
Um, right now, I I I really appreciated kind of getting the overview, though, because I, you know, hearing it from someone who's looking at it from the outside, I think is like super helpful for me, because sometimes we get really bogged down in some of our own questions. So I I really appreciated the presentation.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Yeah.
He was here before the doors opened this morning.
Enjoy this beautiful evening.
The go part.
Yeah. And so let's take a step backwards now that Kim is here. I'm glad you survived the traffic, Kim.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. Um, so we deferred approval of the minutes until you were here. And Sylvia sent in some editorial changes this afternoon. I forwarded her email to you, Kelly, and Kim. Um, let me just read those folks. Um, so one's just correcting the spelling of her name and attendance and noting that she joined by Zoom about seven ten, not seven thirty. And then on page two, under Treasurer's Report, um, she suggests changing the verbiage to given trustee verbiage's late arrival. So not big changes editorial. And I assume everybody saw the editorial changes that I sent in earlier this week as well. So can I get a motion to approve the minutes as amended? Sam? Second. Sylvia's second. Okay. All those in favor?
I.
I. Are you voting? Benita?
Yes.
Okay.
Is it the left hand or the right?
Okay, great. Thank you. We got that taken care of. Um, so David, review of staff feedback, or I guess this is David and Sam, uh, staff feedback and employment and benefits package.
I, you can, well, I mean, you know, generally positive, but sick leave continues to be a an area of concern. And, um, you know, we talked about it at our last staffing subcommittee and drew on some ideas to, you know, respond to the concerns. And I think upping the amount of sick leave is is where we landed from sixty to eighty. Although uh, I don't know that we're doing uh, anything additional for the subs, but for the full and part time, um, raising that, it does represent a a more significant raise as a percentage for part timers. Um, and I was wondering how that lands with full timers, seeing that, you know, our cameras get more of a bump, but I still think it's the right thing to do, given the feedback we've had. And I don't think that it's a, you know, a budget buster. I mean, it ups the budget for subs, right? Because if you up the sick hours, you assume some people are going to take more and that will require more subs, but sick leave itself has no cash value. And so it's a I think an appropriate response to the folks who were concerned about that piece or perceived it as something being taken away, even though overall leave is better.
Still giving like twenty percent.
Yeah. So if I can, I mean.
Or something.
Yeah, I I mean broadly, um, if I can characterize this, and I don't mean disparage, like the the plan that we had in the handbook was based off of, it was a data driven plan, which assumed a collective responsibility for those people who got sick. So we implemented about four or five different leave programs for people who were to get sick for a long period of time or be out of work for a period of time. And the sick leave number was derived from data and how the uh, sick time over the course of several years, uh, from I think the hit there and maybe where it didn't resonate very well was that idea of a collective response to sick time, right? So the staff, uh, nevertheless, communicated a need to have more individual time, uh, for themselves. And I think probably, you know, for whatever reason, uh, were either skeptical about a collective response or um, not entirely, uh, wanting to be forthcoming around an illness that they would have to share with the employer, their employer, that then granted them additional leaves of almost, you know, multiple times, right? So they they would could be out for indefinite period of time. Uh, and so I do agree that moving it to eighty uh, could appease some of that and certainly shows the willingness to negotiate on the board. Uh, what I said to Sam and Jen, and I want you guys all to agree, like, had you started out and said, like, we want the best plan, uh, for leave of any library in the state, uh, I would have come back with that. That's not what you said. Uh, we came back with a plan, which I thought was better than most and kind of put us in that range between seventy fifth and ninetieth percentile. Uh, this minor change, uh, could have an impact, right? And that's the part that Sam alluded to, but, um, like the city's plan, it unwittingly, I don't believe they had set out to incentivize, uh, taking an excessive amount of sick leave prior to the last couple of years that you were employed, but that's the result of what they had done. And it's obvious to anyone who looks at it from the outside, it's like, well, this really incentivizes the people in the last two years of their employment to just take a ton of sick leave. There may be an unintended consequence of increasing it to eighty, that we are incentivizing, uh, part time employees to take it take more sick leave. I'm not saying that that's going to happen. I don't believe full time use of sick leave will change, uh, one iota. Um, but the reality is, is that for uh, part time employees, their vacation leave went up by eighty two percent uh, as a result of this plan, and their sick leave uh, that they earn goes up by what they could even possibly earn at the city. It's this is about, this is forty two percent of what they earn. Maybe it changes nothing. Maybe everybody feels completely, uh, happy with it. Nothing changes in terms of sick leave. But I, but I, you know, I will tell you that I'm, I want to reserve judgment and obviously, we give eighty hours. I I think we should, um. We don't go back from there. But what we may in turn do a year from now, if the data is indicative of an increased amount of use of sick leave, we will probably move back away from a collective response. Uh, move more towards an individualized earning amount. So you would earn up to an amount, which once you put people in a position where you earn up to a certain amount, uh, the state requires forty eight hours, we would probably leave it at eighty, um. Then you have to allow a carry. So then we are carrying over, uh, a maximum more than eighty. Uh, but we'll see. I I don't want to, I don't want to assume that's going to happen until we see the data. But I mean, most of these things, the whole sick leave bank is premised on the idea that we're giving people enough sick leave for what the average use is uh, beyond the median use, but it covers about, and for those people who are not, then there was a bank that they could draw from. Their short term and long term disability that they could draw from. Uh, and so those plans, um, you know, I, uh, I don't know. We we may be back in a year and saying like, wow, the data shows this. We pull back from it and go to a plan that's more of an individualized sick leave program with vacation.
And we're getting pretty close to the best plan of any library in the state if we're not already there yet.
Yeah.
So so one question to make sure I understood. So everyone gets eighty hours, part time and full time, no matter how much they work.
And that's what we had planned to do with sixty as well.
And you're not concerned about a kind of wage compression phenomenon there? Or is that what you were alluding to?
Kind of, I mean, or a sick leave compression phenomenon? Yeah. And it cited the percentage increase for part timers, which is really large.
You know, full time employees, they can earn currently, I mean, so they can't earn nearly as much as they have with what we had on the table, right? They can't earn that much with the city until they've passed twenty years of employment. So after twenty years of employment, yes, they could earn maybe a day or so more, combined sick and vacation. As we've seen from the data, as I've seen for years, and as we see from the accrued sick leave banks, uh, people don't use this only in the manner which they have it. It's just a worthless benefit that provides a level of comfort and a sense of insurance, uh, for their individual person. Um, but not necessarily, uh, response to how people get sick, right? Like, so people get sick. And because of the way in which the city's policy is written, and you have to use all of your leave in order to qualify for short term disability, you type nobody on short term disability for, I think, my entire time here. I I can't remember what. Because you have to exhaust all of your, our policy is not that. You qualify for short term disability without a week. And so, um, all of the things that we put together were a change and increasing the amount of sick time, I think, uh, responds heavily to the, uh, that sense of 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 a more individualized accrual of leave, but it's not an accrual. And the variation from sick to full time employees, uh, the data, I I don't think the the full time employees are going to change their habits. Uh, the sick time, part time usage of sick leave, we may see because on, I think, from an outside person, if I were to share it with an analyst, they would say like, holy crap, you've just incentivized part time people to take more sick time. And I, you know, that's how I look at it, is possibly the case as well, but I'm I'm not going to presume that they will. I my presumption is, is that from a comfort level.
Yeah.
They and and from a negotiating point of level, they're going to feel like the board listened to me and I have enough sick time. I'm not worried.
But I also, I encourage transparency with the staff that we're trying this. And we're going to reevaluate after a year. What will you be looking at? Here's what we'll be looking at.
So was the, can I ask a question? So was the, this came out of the conversation that was on September twelfth, right? Is that right?
And other feedback, David.
Taking feedback ever since.
Okay. So has the proposal of an additional twenty days been out there?
Twenty hours.
For twenty hours rather?
Uh, that proposal, uh, was something that we had on the table from the beginning, uh, for the justices to the the Personnel Committee to consider as a package that we would offer from the outset. Uh, that was not what we chose to do. Uh, we chose.
I think.
You know, was your question that hasn't been out there to the staff?
Yeah, in just in a response.
Uh, there have been multiple staff who have recommended eight. So in the comments that they have submitted, both either through the open chat line or directly.
We didn't say, maybe we could go to eighty, but you know.
I couldn't tell.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we said that within the staffing subcommittee, but it was.
There's lots of contributions among the staff. And I think, you know, I I got several well thought out, um, you know, compelling emails from staff about the board be willing to just go to eighty. That would people feel better. I I don't, you know, again, with the data, um, the difference between when you move up to eighty, we're not in that, we're not in that neighborhood of the, uh, top twenty five percent. So roughly twenty six employees who use, I think, most of seventy percent of all sick leave. Uh, so we're not hitting that. By going to eighty, it doesn't cover them. There will still be a need for short and long term disability. There are people who get, every year, there are people who, you know, break a limb, have surgery, get sick.
Good evening. The library will be closing in fifteen minutes. Please complete your library business and exit the building. Thank you.
I think we have a bad last session on JLF Sunday.
Oh, my God.
Yovan May, so it's gonna be like wonderful poetry reading and.
Remind we have to get this one out there next year.
Yeah.
I think the recommendation for eighty is a win, uh, on the super. Uh, you know, we'll see what data shows. I I I think, I think the, um, you know, when I look at it from a perspective of what the usage rates have been, a number of people who have used more than sixty, the cost to us is really like, it's like, it comes down to something like twenty seven thousand dollars a year or more in subs. If if all of those people in that category use all of that time, it's 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 incidental. And and for the comfort that it will buy and for the, uh, the positioning of the board listening to the staff feedback, I think it goes miles. So I think it's worth doing.
It makes sense to me, and I agree with Sam, you know, that we should say, look, we're going to going to do this. It makes sense. We'll see what happens. We'll look at it in a year and and see where we are for that. So, you know. See any big issues with that. And again, thank you for taking the time to.
I think that almost everything else has been very positive. Correct me if I'm wrong, in terms of the.
We got a ton of great feedback, honestly, and the document is much improved by having put it out to all the staff. There were a lot of things that we did keep an FAQ, responded to all the questions. Um, many of the questions that came in were no brainers. We just changed the policy. I I don't know how much, if you guys even listened to the meeting from the most recent one that Sam and uh, Jennifer attended, but there was another question that came up, a question of comments, I guess, around, uh, break times for nursing mothers, which, you know, just honestly, we hadn't considered it. We just changed the practice to accommodate what they were requesting. And so a lot of it happened in that way. Uh, the staff won't actually, we we will be sending out, the 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 feedback closed on Monday, so yesterday, uh, we have an email ready to go out to all the staff. We don't have this number plugged in, but we will plug this number in uh, that addresses all of the concerns as they come up, not individual questions, but the concerns that are expressed. Says what the response is. The staff won't actually have an opportunity to provide feedback now on the handbook uh, until such time as they're being offered a position, and they'll be given the handbook at that time. Uh, it is pretty much in place. We're not changing. We're not, there was, I thought that perhaps there would be, if we moved sick leave to eighty, take away a holiday or remove vacation time, uh, neither of which I thought were smart ideas. And, uh, so, yeah, we're, we are left with a package where Sam is absolutely correct, is I don't know of a library in the state of Colorado that has better benefits pa, uh, holiday benefits time off package. And that's for you to be prepared uh, to answer to the public who asked that question, like, was that your attempt? And so that is the that is the sense what we've. Yeah.
Well, I think having a good benefits package helps with affordability. It doesn't directly help with cost of living. Um, but it does help with affordability with all those intangibles.
If we go back to the model, and I'll remind you, we are in a heavy, we will be in January in a heavy duty recruiting mode. We are trying to recruit, uh, about forty percent of the organization, forty percent of what we have, forty to fifty percent of what we have now to add to the organization. That benefits package, uh, and having one of the better ones will be a significant recruiting tool, I think. Um, when staff see that they start with four days, four four weeks of vacation from day one, that there are twelve holidays instead of nine. Um, all of those things are going to, uh, resonate with applicants per job.
So everybody, I'm seeing nods of the head on this from coming forward. So again, thank you for your work on that. Um, and you're going to give us now a preview of the health benefits package.
I am. So, um, I, you know, the health benefits broker, uh, presented a package to Jennifer and I Friday. It's good news. Um, so the, um, the the plan is they were able to successfully get bids from Cigna, uh, which is what the staff had requested.
The library will be closing in ten minutes. Please complete your library business and exit the building. Thank you.
So the plan is nearly identical to the current plan that is being offered from the city. Uh, there are some improvements. Uh, those improvements are mostly around deductibles coverage. So for instance, like with the city's plan. So, for instance, like with the city's plan, I mean, I use the example of x-rays, x-rays are covered at eighty percent and then.
Before you dive in, can you explain these headings and columns so that we can follow?
Oh, sure. This is just a cost comparison sheet. So I I will, I will come back to this. This is a critical thing that I can't put on tonight. So, um, so the total cost uh for the uh. The health benefits plan, which includes vision and dental, those plans are different than what the city provides. Uh, as well as we were able to find insurance for short term and long term disability, which I did not anticipate. Uh, but we did find, uh, FH did find firms for us to do it. Um. Total cost, current employees, around eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. That includes the clinic. So we have. Uh, FH came forward with the idea that we would pay a monthly fee for those employees that are enrolled in a healthcare program. Be able to go to a clinic at any time, uh, next day service, uh, for free with no uh deductible, no copay, no nothing. And so that uh total cost currently comes in around eight fifty. Um, that is a good price. Um. We uh I'm hoping then to get a nod from you all that uh. We can change the employer contribution up from eighty, which is what the city currently provides. That we would provide eighty two percent of the conference, uh, of the of the compensation for. Uh, employees bringing theirs down from twenty to eighteen percent, is what they would pay. And then what you see here in this sheet, uh, the blue, the sheet, the blue in the columns, this is. Uh, it shows the current plan that they have, and then it shows the proposed plan. And so. You can see that this is all within uh Cigna at the top. Um, and you can see that the. On the, the two right hand columns are the employees' contributions on a monthly basis or the employees' contributions on a uh. Pay period, per pay period uh contributions. And so. Uh, it goes through the entire thing, including the dental and the vision plan. Um, with both what is currently being offered and what the. Staff will recognize, like, when I look at this, I recognize immediately which plan I am in. I can look at my copay, my my pay, but in terms of my monthly fees and my uh uh pay. My per pay period uh cost. And then compare it to the new model. And so for me at mine, which is a family plan, um. Basically, I have the same plan, slightly better, and it's four dollars uh less uh per. Pay period for me, so over the course of a year, whatever that is, a hundred bucks.
So we understand the columns. The first is the total premium. Second, or I'm sorry, the second column under premium. And then the ER contribution is.
That's us.
We're paying.
Yep.
The monthly rate and and then the per pay period rate. Okay. So, yeah, it's weird because it looks like we also have another tier. Employee plus children that isn't offered by the city.
Yeah, that's interesting, and I haven't honestly asked them much about that. I think that is for a single parent with children, so you can have a, there is a plan that's available that. Currently, you would take the family plan.
Or your spouse has their own. You cover your kids. Yeah, which is actually could save you a thousand bucks. Uh, no, like, if your spouse had, or, you know, you didn't have to pay the family plan, that's, that's. That's, that could be significant.
And the vision and dental plan are different. Um, we asked them, the employees who came in with the survey, were not happy with either, um. The FH stopped around for a plan and rec- is recommending uh these in front of his emeritus, um. Vision and emeritus dental. And they come in roughly, one of them's cheaper than what the state provides. One of them's more expensive, but they balance out, so it's the same.
And then they'll have like a health savings account, it looks like.
The health savings account is something we'll talk over with the uh personnel subcommittee, but currently, uh, city gives five hundred dollars in a HSA. Uh, for union employees, hourly employees, and a thousand dollars for pension employees. We're recommending a thousand for everyone, and we might, you know, once we see the full budget, we may decide. But just that number.
The library will be closing in five minutes. Please complete your library business and exit the building. Thank you.
So we've talked a little bit about the HSA before, right? So a lot of people will like to go with an HSA because there's a tax benefit to doing so. So if you're. A high income earner, of which we have none, um, then it's a, there, you can find a tax benefit on it and take it off on your personal deductions. That makes a lot of sense. That's not, uh, we, you know, the people who use HSAs. But the city does incentivize it by that contribution. I suggest that we continue that contribution. Uh. The reality is, is that there are people in, on staff who are not high income, who are choosing the HSA as a manner of uh.
Saving.
Saving money for their healthcare, right? So they put the money in there, they take the benefit that the city provides, and they use that as a supplement to pay for whatever healthcare. Expenses they're going to have that year. Um, so, um, we haven't decided on that number yet, what we'll recommend, but I'm. I I'm thinking a minimum of a thousand dollars for everyone, back to that, everyone gets the same thing. Uh, and then uh potentially, we might go higher, but we'll have to wait and see what the budget looks like to decide.
And that's an amount of money that, like, we would contribute to a person's account, or that's like the cap that they can contribute.
Yeah, that's the amount that we would contribute.
Of that, sure, whatever.
You can choose to do, if you qualify for an HSA, maybe, I think you can choose to put in whatever you want. You can put two thousand, or you can get up to whatever.
Or a family of seven thousand, and then.
But we would put that in on the front end to just incentivize them to have an HSA account?
Yeah, it's a practice that the city has made, and so it's, um, it is the. Uh, it is a plan that I I don't, we don't, I don't have access to the census data about how many staff members use it. I don't know that we know that yet. We will have some data if, once an open enrollment period occurs to say how much. But I think if we stick with the amount that the city is doing, we'll be fine.
I thought, um. I thought those, they weren't called HSAs, they were like FS, FSAs or something like that. If they're, it's like your employer, no?
So, yeah, there's both. Um, the flex spending account is like similar to an HSA, but usually with an FSA. Um, you have to have a, like a, like a PPO plan, you don't have a high deductible plan. So you would be like, you have a thirty five dollar copay or whatever, so that you can have a flex spending account and some.
And that's where I'd say employers contribute to that account, but not to an HSA.
It's usually the opposite, actually.
Really?
Yeah, they put, well, some may do both, actually. So, but like mine, and will contribute to the HSA, but. You can contribute whatever you want to a flex spending account. It's like for classes and dental work and stuff like that. And that's just up fronted and then deducted from the FSA, so.
Yeah, when I had an employer who contributed to the FSA, not to the.
Yeah, okay.
HSA. We currently have about twenty eight employees that contribute to an HSA.
About half. Well, you have, how many employees you have? Seventy?
Like a third.
Third, third, okay. I did the whole math of, like, on mine at least, and like, I like, looked at my entire medical expenses and like. And with the match and the lower deductible, if you take the lower deductible amount and put it in your HSA. Um, you actually, it was cheaper to do the high deductible plan. You just have to. Be disciplined and put the money into your agent. You can't pocket the money. And then, because like when you end up paying for like a service, right? Preaching, but like a thirty five dollar copay will, service may only be fifty seven dollars, you're paying like eighty percent. And so it was like, your your insurance actually wasn't paying much, anyway.
You should come to the open enrollment period.
I I can tell you, I can tell you. As a uh person that has had to use the medical benefits, I can. The best insurance is not to get sick, and then the second one is, you know, to, um, so, yeah.
So a couple of other things, right? So you.
So, so can we walk through what they're getting for this? And we're seeing what the costs are. So medical. The current medical plan, the proposed medical plan, it is the better coverage, as I understand, from what's in the city plan right now.
Yeah, so I was not prepared to share that with you tonight because I'm not prepared to share.
I know, I know, I'm just details. I'm just looking for the, you know, sound bites at the top to make sure.
Attention, the library is now closed. Thank you for joining us today, and we look forward to seeing you again.
We can talk about the details about that, that's still on track. We haven't really talked about the differences between vision and dental, and so the city currently. Has either a low PPO or high PPO, and we have one plan. Is that, in the case of vision and dental, more equivalent to the high PPO that the city has? I see Jennifer nodding, okay. Yeah, that's all I was looking for, is just kind of that thirty second cut. It's great.
Thirty second cut on the, the thirty second cut on the. Plans themselves is they're nearly identical. There are some uh minor adjustments that are improvements, not minor adjustments.
Which plan are you talking about?
On the proposed plans with regard to health and dental, but in terms of your deductibles and or copays. So there are merely. What we did was we matched what the city currently offered, and then those places where we could improve it, we did so, but it's, it is literally. Uh, what staff are going to be looking at is essentially the same plan that they have with the city, and these are the new prices.
But now you're confusing me, because if I have a low PPO vision plan with the city now. And I'm going to the district's vision plan, I'm going to get a better plan, right? Because I don't get as much for the low PPO plan as I do for the high PPO plan. That's why I pay less. So I just think we need to be careful about the language in here. It sounds like they're getting the better coverage. The city's version of the better coverage with our plan. Even though they aren't paying a lot more for it. I mean, that's what gets confusing about the low PPO and the high PPO, since those are different plans for people right now. We just need to be careful about how we explain.
Yeah, and I'm not prepared to do so. I I don't know that anybody is until the.
That's fine.
There you go. And so I'm anticipating the packet this week or early next. I'll bring it to you to review in advance of distributing it to staff, but then our intent is to. Put out basically the healthcare package as it is, as an information packet. Uh. Yeah, so I I'll just go back to the thing. So the the idea tonight is to give an overview. Really, all I'm asking.
It's great.
Is, are you fine with eighty two percent uh contribution? And if you are, then fine, we can move forward. Um. We will share the cost matrix, but not next week, not this week, with the staff. We'll share that in conjunction with. Sharing the overall package, which is basically like what you would get if you were an employee. It'll be at that draft. Um, our benefits broker, um. Will, I believe, open themselves up to questions either via phone or email from staff then, so they will be collecting. Feedback from staff once they have that full packet and being able to answer questions. Kind of like what you're asking now, how do they compare? What is better about this or what is different about this? Um, and then ultimately, you don't make a decision on the final healthcare package. Until you make a budget decision. So at the time which we come back to you, it will be as a budget item uh in in the overall scope of the budget. Um, and so this is a point that I want to address, right? So it's. The current pricing is around eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. What your twenty two, twenty twenty four budget will reflect. Is all of the added employees, and we are anticipating a higher enrollment percentage. Among those employees, because we're hiring a lot of professional positions that we have never hired before. Um, that are full time positions, facilities, IT, HR, finance, communications. We expect a higher enrollment. Percentage than what we currently have. So we will probably be putting putting forward a number that's almost double that. So one point five million dollars uh is the rough estimate of what we will have for the combined cost of the healthcare plan. And dental and short and long term disability, as well as the clinic. Um. So the short term and long term disability things, that's a big land for us. I don't know. If you've ever had to deal with that before, my assumption was we would just be self insured with some form of stop loss, a long term disability plan. Instead, uh, there is a insurer uh who's willing to um. Make insurance for it, which seems like a screaming good deal. Um, I'll bring that data back to you if you really want to see the details of it, but uh. Yeah, they will ensure both for short term and long term disability. Uh, there is a difference, so we would self insure, because we had said in our. Projected thing that we would like to do, short term disability for up to seventy five percent of your wage, uh, that you would earn on some uh uh disability. We were able to get insurance for up to sixty percent. So the library would just self insure that additional fifteen percent to make sure the staff would be able to. On short term disability, they would get seventy five percent of their wages. So that is another kind of decision point, um, in order for us to have. Long term disability, it's at sixty, uh, both of those numbers are higher than average.
Um, how with, and maybe you don't want to go. How would, with this plan that we're looking at, maternity leave or? Sometimes in some places, it's like a combination of short term disability and other things.
No, we do paid parental leave, so you, you're paid twelve weeks, uh, um. And that's a proper plan the city has currently. So if you do qualify, if there are extenuating circumstances, you do qualify to go on. Extended, either using, I can't remember, passion leave and short term disability or one of the other. Twelve payings. One last thing, um, unless questions.
Yeah, question. So is city HR also involved in the conversation? Because last time, remember when we talked with Nurya and Chris, um, they suggested that HR could be available to employees. Help them understand the current package and how it's connected to the new package. And we said, we had this health broker who was going to meet with employees, and there was discussion about trying to make sure they're all singing from the same choir book.
We have some emails into HR. We're hoping to hear back. We have, um, so, yeah.
So should we maybe do a prod to Chris and say, we are ready for HR to engage with us and.
Yeah, if you'd like, I, you know, honestly, at this point, the brokers, you know, the broker will be ready to go in the next two weeks, and I don't know that we need the current HR. Unless we need the HR on some other things, though, like uh uh coordinating the timing of a termination notice.
Yeah, it's both needing them and not having them given information that's incorrect. I think it's both defensive.
Yeah, we need to do a warrant.
To do what?
S. S, layoff warranty. Yeah, and uh, because we're.
Can we finish this?
Sorry, I'm sorry, sorry.
Uh, so, yeah, some prodding to get HR to reach out, yes. I I I think, I'm assuming that's going to be forthcoming when the IGA is done, but like I.
Whenever talking about timing it for October, when we met with them, so that's kind of where we are.
The city's, uh, the city is announcing that the open enrollment period for city employees is. October, uh, late October. I know there's confusion among our staff, library staff.
One of the things there.
So we will be putting out a communicate, uh, I believe. This week, uh, for library staff to ignore. It's likely to be after the budget. Um, we're looking at probably mid-November. Uh, so it's all about the timing, right? We get out of the budget October twenty fourth, hoping that offer letters go out first of November, and then once. Staff have accepted the offer letters, then they can begin opening.
And then, and termination happens somewhere in there too, right?
Yeah, it's fast.
Well, but I mean, that's all the steps that has to occur. I'm making notes to Chris about the things that need to be worked out.
Ideally, the termination notes and the offer letters would coincide. Um, that would be my preference. Um, and not, I think, a termination notice, uh, without any kind of.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, I can do that in copy if you need it. Thank you.
So the last, two last things, wellness program, we do have a wellness program, we've selected it. I don't have any details to share with you at this point. There was staff request in the survey, if you remember, uh, for, what do we do about gym membership, stuff like that? And so the health, the wellness program does have a card associated with it, uh, and would enable us to put money on that card. Aside from per employee, wellness program goes to everybody, not just employees who are enrolled. The health program enables you to earn points, uh, earn essentially cash. Um, and we could put some money on that program, which then, uh, if you remember, there was some discussion from, uh. Substitute employees about whether or not we would supplement their healthcare costs if they went to the FA family program. Um, I don't believe that's an eligible expense on the wellness program, but they can use the money that you put in the wellness card for. Gym membership, for buying a bicycle, for buying healthy foods, that kind of thing. So there's, there's an option there, and we'll talk about it with the personnel subcommittee about what. Perhaps money we would put on that. I don't know what gym membership is these days, but. And then the last bit is the voluntary benefit program, so the city's, uh. And then the last bit is the voluntary benefit program. So the city's uh city obviously has a number of voluntary benefits, like you can have supplemental life insurance, death and uh dismemberment insurance, all kinds of different things. Uh, we um, we did find a insured package similar to what we have with the city at the same cost. Uh, it's not the same company, it's the same company quoted as prices. More than double what we have currently with the city. And so I think in the, in the survey and in comments that we've heard since, there are people that like Affleck. Um, and so the Ha- Affleck is who does the supplemental insurance with the city. Uh, they did not put us a reasonable price. Um, it's like way out of line. So we have two other insurance companies that we shopped with, one of which has come back with prices that are equivalent and coverage which is equivalent to what they have now in all of us. Then I'll be coming back to you as well and probably will be highlighted in the uh in the handbook, which I hope to have for next week, but it could be the ten.
It's a lot of work.
Yeah, it's a lot. And you know, the insurance thing is, we'll get down to details, and I, I really do believe this is one of those kind of things where it is very individual, um, how do people treat their health. Um, our enrollments now are not high, uh, they may go up this new plan. Um, but I think all the kind of questions, I don't know if we can write anything that's going to be informative for everybody like this in my mind will want to put out within a week or so because it will alleviate some level of anxiety. And they will recognize their plan, they'll look at the costs, they'll do like I did, add up the total costs that come out per pay period and see where they land or how it all works out. But um, but it's not the plan itself, it doesn't go over.
And my expectation is Ronnie, the benefits broker and her team will be, will be on it for any employee that has a question, you know? And that, that's one of the reasons we picked, because they really sold their customer service. And this is part of that, understanding the new plan and every family is a little different, right, in terms of what their needs are?
And, and my questions are going less, I think, at employees, but remember, we also have an audience of the public that will probably be interested in what we're doing with this. So having some way that we can explain in very short bullets, this is what the health plan
Yeah.
looks like in comparison. That's the other
Yeah.
But we'll work through that, I'm sure. No, and I'm not
Cost.
I'm not even talking data. I'm just saying an explanation. I mean, so they're going to get a health plan that's as good, maybe slightly better than what they have with the city for slightly less cost. I mean, that level of at that point. Um, and I think we may have um press on the third uh because when I talked to, was it Amber, Amy Cameron?
Amber.
Yeah. Um, she was interested in covering the budget. I suggested the third would be the big overview and then the ten is the public hearing, so.
Or is the preview?
Yeah, the big.
So uh, that sounds fine. And you know, the FH has, will do, and I'm waiting for Sam and Jen to tell me what they recommend. She's more than willing to come and talk to you all on our package or present to the uh personnel subcommittee to go over the package. It's up to you really to decide. I, I don't know what it is, how much you want, buddy.
And if you want, if the board wants a full presentation. And me.
I was trying to imagine when you would do that.
Yeah, and right, I knew you were going to say that. But I had to offer.
I had that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, but it's, it's a big expense and it's, you know, major piece of this transition. So it's, you know, don't want to overlook it or think it's just enough to read this. So, I mean, I I think we should have that time for that presentation before us as body.
I think the timing of that with passing the budget, that's what I'm trying to figure out. I mean, can it, can it trail passing the budget? Because there's no way.
Presentation. Sure could. You, I mean, the seventeenth uh is a period in between, like where we have planned for a presentation, but you know, it's all about hitting the dates, right? Like we're still, it's all scrambling every day, all day to make sure we're hitting all the deadlines. And so like, yeah, uh you can put in whatever you like. We can have her here. You, you're approving basically the budget around the healthcare package. And, but I mean, understanding the package, I think, is important.
I think you're probably going to have a better package as far as like shrink wrap package of material for staff and this, like a present like this, right?
Yeah.
So I think, I almost think just like, for me, I, I mean, I could almost review that more than like, but if we need to take media time, I'm definitely willing to do it. But like, that would be more informative because like normally it's like a here's what you're paying now, here's what the rate increase is or, or decrease maybe. And then like, uh, you know, here's the pet insurance or whatever, you know, and the tickle policy, that kind of stuff, I think is probably, you know, seeing it all in one place in like a little booklet like you normally get when you're going to hires in one or whatever, that's probably the that would be, that'd be useful.
Yeah.
Yeah. If we don't have the time to at least review that before the it'd be to look at it all, that would be.
But yeah, I think they're willing to do whatever you'd like.
I mean, I think it can be allowed forty-five minutes for a presentation on that before this group in a public setting. Um, because these other meetings have been, were closed meetings in a sense, and yeah, I mean, I just think there should be some kind of public sharing related to that what it is. So you're saying it could happen between?
The seventeenth is the only time.
You, you could do it on the seventeenth. You could also do it after you approve the budget. Like you could come in and have an educational session around the program. I mean, I, it's as you like. You, you, you tell me what you want to do, uh, and or say, Jen.
I just, I mean, our job as a board is to approve the budget and make sure we are okay with the parameters of what you're doing in the plan. I don't think our job is to go into the details of the plan. So I'm not sure it would make sense to put it after the budget and it becomes an information item. So let's see if we can do something on the seventeenth. Maybe it's something that sort of, as Doug was saying, it's just a summary of, okay, here's where we landed, employee handbook. Health benefits and all wrapped up in one neat piece. I think that would be helpful for us and for the public and possibly for some staff as well.
For you to meet Ronnie, right? I don't think anybody else, other than me and Jen, that you can do it.
I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
So in the present, are we ready to move on, Lex?
Yes.
So director's report, we're going to do a presentation of financial software uh that we have selected uh to our recommendation, like for your approval as well as approval of the implementation timeline process. And so Jennifer is good, going to do the presentation for us tonight.
While she's setting that up, were all these numbers put into your financial model that you showed today or?
You know, so we have been speculating on what the cost would be.
Okay. It's pretty close. Yeah.
Yeah, I think we're in really good space.
Yeah, good.
It's not, I mean, I, it could have been more.
Yeah, I know.
I was prepared for it to be in excess of this. What we don't know, again, I, I didn't know until a couple of weeks ago. It was like the percentage of staff that are enrolled. Like I never knew that.
Right.
We, we operate currently with the city off of a formula.
Right.
So we're basing all the data, a formula, given that formula, we are saving a little money. But I think the formula is based off of eighteen hundred employees around the city, and we don't know what their decisions.
Yeah.
Let me get in a presentation. Is there anybody that's a Zoom professional that can help with that? It's covered.
Zoom experts.
Great title.
Yeah, new job skill.
Can you go to slide? That's what I'm trying, it's underneath here and I can't, oh wait.
I'll go around the bottom.
Hey, I did it. Okay. So this has been a really interesting learning process for me. Um, Adriana Banekowski, our accountant, and Amy Shum, our IT manager, as well as David Cox, um, lent us some of his guidance to evaluate different software packages that are inter- enterprise resource planning systems, basically finance systems for the library. So we're currently um setting up a QuickBooks, an instance of QuickBooks online, but we're going to rapidly outgrow that. Um, we considered trying to make it work, but it just doesn't seem like it's going to be a good fit for us because um QuickBooks doesn't allow for true fund accounting. You have to set up separate instances of QuickBooks and they don't communicate with one another. Um, it doesn't have much integration with other systems like payroll systems and um uh fixed asset management, that sort of thing. It's largely a manual entry kind of system, so you have opportunity to introduce a lot of errors and different things like that. And we do quite a a high volume of accounts payable transactions every week. Um, and we're only going to have two staff members doing that, that work. So um, that was a, another reason why QuickBooks doesn't seem it doesn't have fixed asset management. It doesn't allow for us to track like loan origin, or loan origination. And it's a um, one-size-fits-all permission. So anybody that uses it has permissions to do anything in it. So it just doesn't seem like the best fit for us long, long term. So our goals for an ERP system were uh to find something that had true fund accounting um and that would be able to manage those different funds in a way that you could roll them up or you could um query and use them individually. We wanted to improve data visit, data visibility to our, our user dashboards. We, we needed customized scheduled reporting. Um, that, both of those things are currently, well, the users don't have dashboards right now. And this, the reports, I generate them monthly for, for all our budget managers. So it's a pretty cumbersome process in munis. And QuickBooks doesn't have much in the way of capabilities around that either. Um, we were also looking to simple, simplify and automate a lot of the accounting processes. So like bringing in invoices automatically, getting them to be entered into the system because we want to read this manual entry. We wanted to improve the end-user experience so our budget managers could kind of have a one-stop place where they can look at all the funds that they manage, all the org, org codes or account codes that they manage. And also we could uh better track some statistical information right on a dashboard. Uh, we were looking for something that has integration with Palacity, which is our human resources information system and Sierra, our integrated library system. We are hoping um that we can finally get the, all of the ordering and inventory that we do in Sierra um to upload into the finance system. It'd be a really great way to keep our records. Right now, we're managing it in two different systems and they never match up. And we're also looking at um in, in the future, introducing a point-of-sale system. So we can um automate some of that process. Right now, we have uh cash registers and credit card machines. And then also they have to enter transactions into the library database. So the frontline staff are doing three different functions often for, you know, minimal minimal trends, minimal amounts of money in their transactions. Um, we wanted something that would integrate with JP Morgan Chase Online Banking and their purchasing card platforms. And we also needed a system that has fixed asset management so we could appreciate our assets and keep track of that. We wanted a uh system that would also offer some collaborative budget planning and seen, and forecasting mo- modules. So those were the, are kind of overarching goals. Um we looked at three different vendors. Um, one of the vendors, I was able to talk with her and get through like initial information gathering. And then um I learned today that she had a family emergency. She kind of just dropped off the radar and she reached out today and said, hey, do you want a demo? So uh, we decided we couldn't wait. Um, and we weren't really sure what was going on with her. So we completed um the evaluation process with two of the largest ERP systems um that took us from July through September. Uh, we had several demos. We had uh David Cox join many of the calls to ask, you know, questions from a CFO perspective. We talked to several vendor-provided references for both companies as well as uh used our library network and, and talked to um other librarians, um finance people in libraries in Colorado that use both systems and got a lot of great feedback. So we feel pretty confident in our choice, and that is um to choose Sage Intech as our ERP system. Um, the thing, kind of the, the best things that we liked about this is the, the software system is designed for the nonprofit sector. It met all of the goals that we had. Plus, um, it allows for a dashboard to be designed just for auditors, which we think will, and they say it will uh reduce the amount of time an auditor needs to spend with us as well as cost. And um it also has a really cool feature, which I'm excited to learn more about, that you can integrate some of the non-financial data like attendance um to programs and just about anything you want to measure um and track it against financial data. So um uh you can use all of the data to tell a better story about how we're spending money and how we're making impacts in the community. So Sage had the lowest bid for the subscription and one-time implementation cost, so ongoing. The subscription for all the modules um we're purchasing is thirty-four thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars. There's a one-time implementation cost um that's with a um, another uh vendor who is a um implementation partner of Sage Intech. They're a um, a financial firm um that is certified in implementing the software. They actually were certified in implementing the, the other vendor as well. So they had a, a unique perspective and actually recommended to us that Sage was a really a better fit for us. Um, they have uh extensive um accounting expertise. Um, they also provide auditing services. They just have a whole suite of services. So they're really experienced. I feel like we're in good hands. They also have experience directly in implementing Sage um in Fayetteville Public Library in Arkansas, and we did talk to the finance person there about the implementation and, you know, lessons learned and what she likes about it. And she had really favorable things to say about the system. Um, they have offered us some really nice incentives. So if we sign by the end of this week, um, they're, they gave us a a, one of their tracking modules for free. It's included in that thirty-four thousand plus. They're um committing to a five-year price lock with no contract. So they want to earn our business every year. And so they don't require us to sign more than one year at a time, but they'll, they'll freeze this price for five years. Um, they shared and we did a lot of research and they have the highest ratings for customer support um for comparable other ERP systems. And they're also um one of the only that has the endorsement of the American Institute for Certified Public Accountants. The other perks were that Douglas County Libraries uh went on Sage, I think, maybe two years ago. Um, and then we talked to Fayetteville and um we're lucky that um we have some close colleagues at Douglas County and they're willing to share, share with us like how, what kind of things go into making good decisions for setting up a system like this. We feel like we're in a good place. So um, if you approve this, um, this is our project timeline. So Adriana is going to be the lead on this project and I'll be supporting her. It's a twelve to sixteen-week implementation. The first month of that is really uh Sage is the, the third party implementing, imp- implementation team, getting, assembling their team and doing some data gathering from us. And our work will begin in earnest in in November. So we'll be doing a lot of um setup and testing um starting in November. So we're hoping to sign the contract. um starting in November, so we're hoping to sign the contract to hit the deadline for the that price lock and discounts. Um we'll kick off the project in October, will the build-out phase will be October through November. And then the testing phase um will be in December through January and, you know, if all goes well, um they said February first could be a go-live date for us, it might even be faster if we're if we're really streamlined and we don't, aren't gonna have a whole lot of data to um to extract and migrate to them, so we think it's gonna be an easier process. That's it. Any questions? Yes.
That doesn't change like based on how many people we have next year?
And that was both, there's the one-time cost and then the ongoing costs.
Yes.
You know, and all that is due at the signing of the contract, or when is that due? Um, I'm not sure. And what are the losses of the other system that we've realized didn't work, QuickBooks? Did we buy or invest in a subscription or something? Yes, minimal, two hundred dollars to set that up, one for one user, and that's Adriana.
This one um live in the cloud or is it?
Yes, sorry, I didn't mention that, but yes, it lives in the cloud.
This is the like financial modeling software, is it's like a financial like cost accounting software that, a cost guy?
Okay.
It does modeling too.
Okay, and there's no
Same.
If we cut over January first, um I guess Paylocity will handle everybody's paychecks and there's no problem with that. Once the lag of getting it implemented by February first.
No, because all the data will live in JP Morgan Chase and Paylocity.
Okay.
Upload it to Sage.
Yeah, essentially, okay.
That's actually our plan, we're just keeping track of um sort of the um expenses, like purchase of materials right now, uh that the district is is funding in QuickBooks, we're gonna, we're not going to um upload like the payroll or the um bank, bank statements the first few months in QuickBooks, because it's just doesn't need to happen and we're gonna get it all squared away in Sage as soon as possible.
It's a go-live, if we have to go live, it will uh make your, our our reporting to you on they look that much nicer than we currently have. And we did try, like this was a, was this like one of those stupid cock maybe ideas, I had to, can't we just buy something off the shelf? And if things, if policies don't work, we'll change the policies. Well, that wasn't about that, it was about, it's about entry, right, manual entry of all this data.
Right.
As soon as you find that out, it's like, that ain't gonna work, like it popularized it on television commercials, you know, a guy just enters the amount and is phoned and you're good. That wouldn't work for us, I don't think so.
And how, how, how big is this company or the Sage or they, have they been in business for a long time and?
No, I don't know offhand
Okay.
how big they are, but they are, like I said, number one with
Yeah.
I mean, the the two that we looked at are the biggest ones.
Okay.
I'm familiar to like other, next thing I'll talk about, but um
Do these services get rated on their security as well and how does this one compare?
Um so it's uh we can control the secure, the permissions for each individual user. And so, yes, it's it's secure. And compared to QuickBooks, it's way secure, because we can just have view-only access for the users who don't need to enter any data. And there's a approval processes for different, we can set those up for different levels of spending or um checks and balances for like writing big checks and payroll and that sort of thing, there's there's things in the system that will safeguard mistakes.
From this system, you're not gonna be able to disperse money or anything like that. Like you, you can't pay from this system, it's a, it's an accounting software, it's not an actual
Right, no, the bank will issue the the payments.
Yeah.
We could print checks, but we're, we're going to set it up with our vendors to not
Okay.
write paper checks whenever possible. And same with payroll, we're gonna do um automatic transfers into um staff accounts.
Okay.
They have five hundred employees, they were founded twenty five years ago.
Oh, good, good deal, thank you.
Well, it looks great. Again, thanks for your thoroughness in reviewing and evaluating. So do you need a motion on this?
We would like a motion
Okay.
both for the uh, or you can do it all together, is the ongoing fee and then the one-time implementation, they are two different vendors, right? And probably, I don't know, one, one motion or two.
Is it written down in here or?
No, I think it'd be simplest to do, to to move approval of the financial accounting system as presented to us tonight with um Sage Intact and its partner for implementation.
His partner, his name is Wipfli, spelled W I P F L I.
Second.
All those in favor?
I.
I, okay, great, another ball hits the ground.
And I, I will say just before, just like I, I'm, I am truly, truly, I am sorry about the pace of things that we're that we are running, you guys, right now. And it doesn't stop, right, like we were, I feel like we gave you ample warning and like October is gonna be like a non-stop grinder in terms of like the stuff that's gonna pressure, so I I'm currently in the process of, I wrote an RFP for auditors today. You'll get that in your packet next week. Uh I need you to weigh in on a couple of things. But yeah, so now we're on to auditors and after auditors uh insurance, right? So we are, uh I think, gonna be having a look at liability and also all the building type insurance that we are gonna need to look at, so I, again, like with health insurance, we'll probably be looking at brokers uh and interviewing several brokers, but then, yes, a package much like health insurance, but with the auditors, we're looking at a relationship, so it is a RFP for putting in three years, potentially three years, like uh twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, and we would like for their assistance in the setup and implementation of Sage Intact, so that when they have a chance to look at it, to do our audit they're familiar with what we've got, all of the auditors that I spoke with so far are all very familiar with Sage Intact.
And the insurance, I assume, is gonna be a little farther out, because if you have to do brokers and that sort of thing, it's
We will, I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna talk to a couple of brokers, probably in the next two weeks, uh to get an idea about what I need to do. I've never taken out catastrophic loss on large buildings that are in floodplains, so like, I think we'll have to.
So maybe make a note that we might be looking at insurance in November.
Yeah, it's definitely post IGA, I need to see, I need to see what that IGA says in regard to
Great, and the insurance that the board needs, is that something we should roll into the um we're good, that we're gonna have the brokers, okay?
Board is protected by the Colorado Immunity Act as well as there are common law protections. But if you want some uh errors and omissions insurance, we can pick that up for that.
Oh, you can do that?
Yeah.
For them, okay.
Okay, great, I I would be interested in nursing that policy, errors and omissions policy.
Oh, actually, last thing. Workbench comp insurance, so we will show for that separately, uh from all the rest. Uh that's not including the health and wellness package. So I am gonna be reaching out to several vendors about you know, that are specializing.
Okay, cool.
Workers. Very much, yeah.
Yes, would that not be part of something that like a broker would do, with like as part of a larger package?
Uh it's possible, I'll be talking to a lot of the same people, yeah, I want, I also want somebody that can, because the way the city has it arranged is to have a risk department.
Yeah. Yeah.
Hmm, so I hear some expertise being put out there?
No.
I'd like to formally ask not. I do it, I do it at work all the time.
I think there's like some approved state vendors or whatever for that, I thought, maybe.
There are, you know, so the bene- the benefits brokers around insurance are big firms, like and lucky with the big, I think, with the, it was just, everyone had the choices, right? But yeah, I don't, I
Yeah, okay.
Big, big, big firms.
Okay, good, um are there any subcommittee updates?
Um I'm gonna be sending you all something about an article for next week.
Okay.
Um for the library newsletter, not the staff newsletter. Um I think we're gonna do an update on where we're at, ready to figure out how we can achieve, and then um I think, I mean, I were talking about doing something about uh banned books, because that's next week, it's banned books week, so something about the importance of freedom of reading.
We would like to ban.
Yes, exactly, I would like each of you to tell me which books we're going to be banning when we switch over to next year. So this one will have high review. But to look for that, I just haven't put it together.
Okay.
And then I can hear, so
Continuing to do that, whatever happened to Channel Eight, we did, I know you did that one interview.
Oh, I don't know, I know you did an interview, I didn't know, we didn't know what happened, okay, I can ask you, I mean.
Okay.
He has mentioned it to me, and they do have a plan for how they would roll it out, but I just don't
Don't wanna rush it.
David and Doug and Chris were on KGNU, it was really informative program on Friday morning.
Good, I haven't seen that.
Be happy callers.
Only happy callers, so um we need to approve special meetings, um somebody wanna make a motion for special meetings in October, October third, October tenth, and October twenty-fourth?
A motion to approve special meetings for October third, tenth, and twenty-fourth.
Okay, second.
Second.
Second, so I'll vote in favor.
You don't have a choice.
And I have to, have two other, um, two other trustee items, um first one, just a reminder, CalCon is in two weeks. Who is planning to go?
Planning to go, but
I was thinking maybe, I think there was one time I could make it.
I'm raising it now, um just because I think we probably want a carpool. Um so I don't know if we wanna start thinking about that, I, I don't know if staff are carpooling.
Where is it again?
It's in Loveland, Loveland off of I twenty, that big that big hotel shopping complex, by, what is it, by the Budweiser Center or something?
Sure, yeah, yeah.
It's a closed event center, yeah.
Yeah, it's very, very convenient for transit, I did look at transit, it's for four and a half hours.
It really isn't, yeah.
So um maybe I'll, why don't I send an email to everybody just saying who's going and which days and and the trustee day is Friday, so that's tracked, there's a whole set of tracks for that. Um and then I had some um points related to the parking lot in the IGA that I wanted to bring up tonight, I don't think this needs to be an executive session, because I think this is straightforward. Um but um I did wanna get this on Kim's or plan, since I know they're looking back in front um with the attorneys, and so if you'll bear with me, um I think we need to have an agreement in principle in the IGA about when the library is charged for use of the parking lot and for how much they will be charged. Um I think the expectation we have right now is that this, the library is going to be contributing to parking lot maintenance, but we haven't heard anything from the city suggesting that the library is going to share in revenues from the parking lot. So from that perspective, it seems to me that the library should not have to pay the parking division for use of library spaces, um and that's kind of the backdrop to this. And so just a little bit of background here, so about twelve or fifteen years ago, when the city decided to start doing cost recovery for all of the time and expenses associated with events that take place on city space. So if you wanna schedule an event in the civic area, you get a permit, there's a number of licenses you get, you pay fees for all of those. You also pay for any additional costs the city incurs, additional maintenance, additional safety, additional fees. And they were, I don't know if they still are, but they were also collecting for the hours that staff spend in doing all of this. You may have noticed that the Fall Fest canceled a few weeks ago, and part of the reason they said is because the city's fees were so high, it does get very, very expensive, so that's the backdrop. And one of the things they try to capture is lost revenue from the parking lots. Okay, so that's the backdrop for this. Um and so there's, there's sort of three scenarios I'd I'd lay out here that, actually four, that we we can see here, so right now, as I think you all know, parking lot is free on Friday, on Saturday and Sunday. So I don't think there should ever be charges for use of parking spaces on those days, because there is no revenue involved. For weekdays, the maximum amount of time people can park in the lots is three hours. And if you have a weekday, all-day event, that's a problem, because patrons can't park for the event. So this is the situation we just had with JLF, so there was all-day Friday and all-day Saturday. And initially, the city had planned, or I should say the parking division, had planned to charge the library for use of the parking lot on Friday, basically, the library would pay for all of the lost revenue um in those parking lots for Friday. Eventually, they backed off of that and they just agreed that they would not enforce, which effectively made it free, and library staff put signs up to let people know it was free. But it takes a lot of time, a lot of negotiation, it slows down planning, and so I think we need to know upfront, we need to have an agreement to be consistent um about what is paid for and when and how much, I understand that the city does not charge the Boulder Creek Festival or things like the Taco Festival for use of the library, so there's an equity issue in here as well. And I think most of this, Kim, goes into the license, this is not sort of detailed of the IGA, but I think a principle that encompasses these scenarios would be very helpful in the IGA, because in my experience over the years, it's, the city doesn't have a consistent policy, and it's sort of whoever's in charge of parking at the time makes a decision, and it's a lot of time and energy and headbutting that goes on. So that first scenario is you have an all-day event on a weekday and you need to have the ability for people attending the event to park there free. The second scenario is when you have an event that requires a lot of equipment and furniture, you have trucks that have to come in the days before the event, which again is workdays, weekdays, and they need to park in particular spaces, you've seen signs where they say this is reserved for these hours, these days. They charge for the use of those spaces as well, at least they charge the library. I don't know if they charge everyone else as well, but again, there should be consistency in that. And if the library is already paying for maintenance, you know, that's gotta be taken into account. Um the third scenario is a smaller one, the library does a number of programs that take place outside the library on the the pa- plazas that are in front, and then sometimes bleed over into parking spaces for some of them. And examples of these, these are almost all programs that are done in collaboration with other city departments. So for example, the Bike Lodi takes up several parking spaces, that's something the library does with the police for bike safety for little kids. Or the Be Boulder Festival, which is something they do with pollinators and such. The city has been charging the library for those parking spaces, even though those are really city programs, which I don't think is particularly appropriate. And then the final scenario is to sort of switch it, which is when you have a big event like Boulder Creek Fest and Taco Fest that takes up the entire parking lot, that has big impacts on the library's operations. It's hard for patrons to park, I don't know that there's anything we can do about that, but there's also a direct impact to the library and having to hire additional maintenance. If the city has to hire additional maintenance, they charge the organizers, I think they should do the same thing for the city, for the library, if the library has to hire additional maintenance. So that's kind of the world of parking lot um issues. I don't think we've heard anything from the city yet about what they're thinking in terms of how much they wanna charge the library uh for the parking lot. Um and Jim, I'd suggest that you elevate this, because my experience, conversations with Elevate this because my experience, conversations with the parking people never go quickly. And I don't know, David, if there's anything you add to that. This is just all on my mind, you know, having Dale after you.
Uh, just, you know, just the fiscal responsibility of it. Like I, if we are. I my advice to you, and I know I'm not supposed to provide any advice, but like. If we are agreeing to some form of shared costs. That we ask them to supply us with the costs that were expended the year prior and perhaps three years prior. I don't believe I've never seen that data. I've asked for it. I don't never seen any data. So you know, I I don't want us to enter into a field where it's like suddenly there's money and now's the time to resurface the parking. And we're paying for the cost because somebody else paid, right? Like that's the part that i- if they can't tell me how much it costs now. And what my one third of the cost would be, then I'm paying one third of nothing, right? And so I don't I don't know whatever agreed to. And I, you know, but you do whatever you'd want to do and then you tell me how much it is, we'll push it for it. But. And again, for me, it just seems like decent fiscal responsibility to say, show us the receipts from what you spent last.
And we have asked for that. Uh, we haven't seen any documentation yet for costs from the city and that might be something else to ask them, Kim, because we are. You know, Chris made a commitment to counsel to get this IGA to them in three weeks now. Um, so it's sweet.
Yay. Right, are you?
Okay.
Do that. Uh, we do have a lot of dominoes that have to fall. Um, so I was wondering, maybe it might be helpful to include that like Gantt chart that she had up. That um was there?
Margot.
Margot. Yeah, like just show us where we're at and that uh with the. Each month, each week or every other week or whatever, you know what I mean?
We're on pace, I can. We just bring her here last week.
Yeah, yes. Yeah, we saw that. It'd be nice to like just see where we're at in that process and. You know, just briefly, if it could include that if our, I don't know if that's possible.
How about every other week?
Every other week.
Seems like an awful lot of work to pretty unjust.
Yeah, every other week or once upon, you know, every other week.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Uh. Yeah, cuz.
I know you like Gantt charts.
I just like this has got to happen so that this can happen and you know, that's gonna happen. So this can happen. It's just kind of all of those things. You know, um, because we're like telling, we, you know, in a couple of weeks here, we're gonna be like, people have to make real decisions like. Like, oh, I'm not gonna be up my fence with the city. So like, we gotta have the benefits in place so that they. You know, I think we could probably give them benefits if we don't. Anyway, just that kind of stuff. So, yeah.
So, Kim, do you have anything in your legal report?
Uh, nothing in there but reports. And one thing to add to that, speaking of moving slowly, I reached out to the city attorneys this morning. Um, asking, they had said they were gonna send the IGA around, get additional comments and then get it back to us and had heard anything. Um, the response was, thanks for reminding us. And then about an hour later, I got the copy in an email. Um, and when I looked at it, it doesn't look like they've added much of anything. So I just pulled it up and I started making changes, including the leases and all of that. Then I'll turn that back to them tomorrow, next day after we pass to run through it.
Okay, and you can ask them if this is the final or near final copy?
Yeah, yeah, I asked if it included all the comments and stuff up in the first call.
Yeah.
I asked for the comments from Steph. An hour later, I got this copy, which does not appear to be be different than the one we had.
And did they say that it does include? I know them.
Didn't say that.
Yeah, so would you clarify that, please?
You always have the additional language that this may not be.
Yes, exactly.
The other.
Right. Right, right, okay.
I uh. Question about the leases, like the does the. Do the leases have to be entirely resolved in the IGA? No.
No. I I think one of the questions I I don't mean to extend this any more, but like because we are leasing. The city's probably gonna incur some costs with these buildings. Since they're not transferring ownership, like they're they're gonna have to maintain an insurance policy as well as us, I think.
I think the city self ensures.
They self insure. Okay, yeah, okay.
I don't think.
Okay.
I don't think they're gonna have.
Okay, then. Okay, just wanted to make sure like.
Yeah.
There were.
It's non-transferable.
It is not transferable. Can only be used for library purposes.
It is not transferable, but typically we can reach out to the developer, the owner of the shopping center. Let's say. There's really nothing's gonna change.
You'll fix the parking. Dream on a sign at least, right?
That's like the city's plan. That's everybody's plan for skating rink.
Yeah.
Okay.
So the the one thing I was gonna say is related to the IGA is I saw Art Lauchman. Last week and asked if they had scheduled a meeting. She said. Well, I brought it up at the at a meeting and she said, I think it's scheduled. I, you know, I don't have my calendar here, so I can't tell you what it is. And um, but I would just presume they would reach out to us, right? If it were on their agenda. I wouldn't presume that. No, no.
I I would. I get an email, so I think if it.
Like the calendar items or.
Yeah.
Agenda items. Okay, that's I just wanted to share that because. My last conversation with her was that she was. It's scheduled. She wasn't sure whether it was scheduled.
I would think they would reach out to the city or at least the city attorney will reach out to the city attorney or the city attorney will reach out to Kim and that's how we'll find out.
Okay.
The city's kind of flip that one.
Yeah.
Fairly, fairly. There's enough going on. Okay, anything else for the good of the order? All right, we are adjourned.